Wait, this is what we also call the opioid.
Well, hey, everybody. Good morning. Welcome. We have agenda review looking at the agendas for Wednesday, October the 15th. It's like we have just a border county commission agenda, no fire agenda, maybe, but okay, Tom, take it away.
Chairman, good morning, Commission. In addition to covering agenda review, we'd like to spend a little bit of time on legislative platform this morning, too. And anything else commissioners want to talk about regarding state work? Nicole, any announcements for Wednesday?
Yes, good morning. For county announcements, we will have the treasurer to come to talk about the two satellite locations that are opening up next week. The register deeds office will also be in attendance to talk about their new notary fraud alert that they have added to their system. On October 13th, household hazardous waste is going to be putting out their mattress coupon, so that we'll talk about that. Reminders, October 15th, advance by mail for the general election begins. We will have a groundbreaking for the new crisis center on October 20th. And then just a reminder for everyone that Cedric County offices are closed on Monday, October 13th for in-service. And that's all I have.
Thanks for coming. All she's got. All right. On the, on the business agenda, we have a couple of items under appointments. One is a resignation and one is an appointment to the Cedric County Addictions Intervention Coalition. This is the opioid coalition group that meets. And the item C is the appointment and the city manager has agreed to that appointment as well. So the city will also have that on their agenda. One new business item and that's, but it's a big one. Dr. Utesh comes in every year and kind of gives an update on what's going on WSU tech. And we've all been out there enough to know that it's a lot. So she's going to come in and give a update and presentation on WSU tech. A number of consent items, consent items ENF are both temporary construction easements are all. This is three construction easements for the same project. It's a stream maintenance issue. I assume item E is one landowner and item F represents another landowner. Lynn, is that right?
Temporary construction easements for both are two, yeah.
Item G is a right of way easement for a bridge work there. And also on item ENF, there is no fiscal note. On item G, there is a fiscal note of $5,620 for a bridge easement. Item H is a vacation request for a landowner in District Three. I think that they want a five foot vacation on some right of way land. And I think they want to build a wall and in the backup is what I was looking at. They want to put, construct some kind of wall. It has passed through Lynn and it also passed through all utility companies. Item I is another vacation, I'm sorry, is a right of way easement for bridge replacement 63rd and 199th Street in District Three. Item J is a CIP amendment increasing funding for a capital improvement, the, the bridge project. And it's to, to the amount of 137,000. I'm sorry, this is for the 63rd Street South pathway. It is a split between Butler County and Cedric County. Our, our half is being amended by 137,500. Prices are going up, right, Lynn?
Actually, this is more of a technical adjustment. So we receive, we're partnering with Butler County on this project. Butler County has sent us that $137,000, but in order for us to put it into the account and make it available, we have to do a CIP adjustment. So we've got the money. Accounting is just waiting to put it into our account pending.
So this isn't a net increase for Cedric County's portion or?
It, no, it does not. There's not an increase for us. It's just, we've received those funds from Butler County. They need to get it into the CIP and the way to do that is through a CIP.
Makes sense. Okay, great.
Thanks, Lynn. Appreciate that. Item K is a request to retain two ambulances in the fleet. EMS has a lot Rusty chiming in on this, too. EMS has a number of remounts scheduled for existing fleet. So they would like to keep two spare ambulances. They, they try to keep five in reserve all the time. They want to keep these two for 24 months, I think, so that they can get through their remounting schedule and then we'll let those go. And the fiscal note on that is to run them for, is it for 24 months? It's 37,000? Or is it annually?
I think that's an annual estimate.
Okay.
With the understanding that as the units go out for remount, fleet stops charging any fees period of time that they're out because they're going out to have the distinct chassis, chassis removed, the box refurbished if it needs. chassis and it comes back with a new chassis, new van and start to start again. So for about a three month period, there's no charges on the peoples that are out for remount. And if these get put on the street and if they fuel in any kind of an offset, but yeah, estimate as to what it might cost.
Okay, that brings us to item L. That is, we are again putting on the agenda, the strategic plan amendment. All of the backup material is contained within the agenda backup. It contains the unchanged mission value statement, the new strategic plan overview, which is what I presented publicly back in August. It has the full strategic plan, which is our worksheet for staff to work through this over the next couple of years. It has the 2019 strategic plan in it and the 2019 strategic plan accomplishments all in that same bundle. So I'm just looking to move that ahead. Item M is a amendment to the CCBHC agreement with Pixas. Michelle, when she was at staff last week, kind of went over this. We are upping their funding just a bit as part of the partnership on work that they do on behalf of Calm Care. So that is item M. Item N. I think Adrian had sent you on email on this as well. This is the, the first renewal of a sub recipient agreement between us and WPD on overdose investigation analytics. And it, it involves one position, which is housed in WPD that give, that work with the health department closely to give updates on overdose information. And that a lot, there's a component there of timing to where the information flows back and forth so quickly that it helps law enforcement, both sheriff and PD to investigate drug crimes that are happening in the community where we see a large number of overdoses happening. Anything else you want to add to that? Lindsay is on, I'm not sure if she's here and if she's in a meeting. Oh, there she comes. Item O is a request to establish budget authority in the equipment reserve fund. There's a component to this. As the commissioner all knows, we are undertaking for the first time in two decades, a new finance software. And it has been very challenging. And there is some strategic maneuvering at the end of the year to process year end expenses and costs. Working around that finance software system. So I want Lindsay to kind of talk on that just for a bit and area.
Hey, Lindsay.
Yeah. Hi, guys. So what this is, is basically a cleanup measure. You all know that over the years we have come to you at year end and asked you to transfer cash from various funds to put them into different projects within an equipment reserve. So while the overall fund is balanced, over time, we have seen some projects either come in slightly over or slightly under, not so much in recent years, because we've policed that a little more. But as we are working to move to a new system, these projects, some of them have been in the system since 2002. And that's the last time we did this. And so we need to get those cleaned up and as much as possible, there's enough cash in the fund to do it, but we want to move that cash around. Make sure every project is balanced so that when we do move to the new system, we have nice, clean, clear, balanced projects. And there's no questions for anybody who comes after us in the new system to try and, and fix things. And so just so you know, the new system does go live November 3rd. So think happy thoughts for the whole project team. But that's why we're trying to do it now instead of waiting for year end. So hopefully that helps. But I'm happy to answer any questions on any specifics.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Okay, thanks, Lindsay.
Item P is a resolution, a delegation of authority for the leasing of real property for technology security that we have discussed with you in the last couple of weeks as well. Item Q is a staffing table change and I don't know if our interim appraiser is here. This is for the appraiser shop. Brent, the appraisers office had to rift four positions that dealt with personal property tax positions because of state law change. Brent is pivoting and using some of that money from the rifted positions to create a, a position that he needs in the appraisers office. And he is here to talk about it. But it is, it is a senior special use and tax exemption appraiser to the staffing table.
Any questions or Brent, would you like to maybe just shoot up an email? I know Commissioner Howes not here. He'll probably be watching, but later day, would it be easier to just present now? Or do you would you like to send over an email? We're here. Come on up. Now we get the appraiser here. We want to take advantage of it.
Morning Commissioners. The, as Tom mentioned, we have four positions that are being reduced in force, reduction in force as a result of those personal property law changes. So in an attempt to reallocate, the first one that is one of pretty critical need is this position will identify and manage the process going forward for our tax exemption, tax exempt properties. So that's anything from ones that are historically exempt churches, government buildings, things of that nature. But more importantly, those around economic development incentives, industrial revenue bonds, EDXs, those kinds of exemptions. We need a more robust database in order to deal with those. We want to add more transparency to the system. So this position is going in and we'll develop all that information. So we've just got better information. We've got new statutory requirements for reporting those exemptions to Commerce as well as to property valuation division. So this will give us the the transparency and the redundancy to take care of that.
Makes sense. Okay. Any questions? That makes a lot of sense, Brent. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay. Items R through double letter A are a series of records destructions, which we do annually. Is specifically driven by policy. Jennifer Scriven is on Zoom. If there's questions on this or Tanya can have a shot too.
Or Cory's in the back. We got all. Of course, here too, yeah. A couple of new commissioners. This might be your first time we've ever done this. So I don't know if someone wants to get just a quick overview of why we're doing this. We will likely get some emails from people that so.
Jennifer. I'm trying to say, I'm trying to remember. You want to talk or you want us to have Jennifer talk?
Yeah, Jennifer, Jennifer, we see on, on Zoom, would you like to? Cory's redirecting. If you're available, would you be able to explain to us some of this?
Absolutely, I can. Okay, so our policy is in line with the state policy indicating how long we keep various types of records for each department. And annually I go through what we have available that is ready to be destroyed and run that through a legal finance, various processes for approval on those from the department level upward. And so the ones on the consent agenda this time are ones that I have identified with that process that are eligible to be securely shredded and destroyed. So they're on the agenda for your approval for that process.
Okay. Any questions on that? Did it follow state law, correct? Yep. Okay.
It does, yes.
Very helpful.
Okay, then the rest of the items, AB through AF are routine business, general bill check registers and plans. I'm sure we'll talk about legislative issues to some degree on Wednesday, and I think we'll probably give you all an update on the WIC situation on Wednesday as well. So we'll need both of those discussions. And then, first, do you want to move back to item M?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that just yesterday, Chairman Beatty and Rusty and Steve Stonehouse and I visited over at the juvenile center with, with all the judges, a couple of them. But this Pixies thing came that I guess and Rusty and, and Brian, correct me if I've got the stats wrong, but one thing that was kind of eye opening to us was that they feel like 60% of their juvenile cases were impacted by substance and mental health and substance abuse. So we have a juvenile problem that, that clearly this, this attention, and I think this item M helps is a contract for juvenile. Just, just this very thing is very eye opening and kind of depressing to hear that we're having mental health and substance abuse problems at 15, 14, 16 year old. And also there could be their parent or their home life is also affected by whatever. So I, I just want to point out this is good. I don't know if it's worth kind of re reviewing as a, as a new item on the agenda so we can make comments or not, but I'll, I'll trust what.
Yeah, this might be something that we can pull to highlight. This conversation came and Rusty, you can add if you'd like. And Tim, if you have any details on Pixas, that might even be helpful, but Judge Jackie Kelly, she's new to the court. And in our conversation, she was even alarmed at her caseload saying 60% have particularly mental health issues. These children have mental health issues, juveniles. And she says, we have got to get more upstream. We've got to work harder at fending some of these mental health issues off in our children. So it doesn't lead to juvenile offenses. And then she was ready to engage. She wants to get involved in the community on this conversation and, and work with Calm Care on a bigger level. So that was kind of the summary of it. It was very refreshing to hear her thoughts as she's seeing things in her courtroom. So Tim, any context on Pixas?
I guess the only thing I'd say is that we've had a longstanding partnership with Pixas, probably more than 20 years, and they help us. They're an, an extender of Calm Care to deliver services to kids primarily that meet that severe emotionally disturbed definition. So they're part of the target population for the state. And they do a nice job, a lot of after school programming and that sort of thing.
Do, yeah. Well, I'm delighted that we're reinforcing the support that Calm Care gives to Pixas for this issue because obviously it's needed.
I think whoever contacts with Pixas, so it's important that they, that they know that, that the commission is very appreciative and actually put on, put on the gas to, to, to help wherever they can. Cause then they, they talk about, then once, once they're not a juvenile, now they're an adult. It's a whole nother world, either resolving in corrections or jail or whatever other problems or homelessness or a lot of stuff. Rusty, yeah. Steve was there too. Stonehouse was joining us too.
It's Kelly estimated based on what she's seen around 60%. Stonehouse indicated that based on data from screenings of kids coming into GIAT brought in by law enforcement otherwise a higher percentage closer to 80% of kids were creating that could use and probably should have some type of intervention.
Very, very important. Appreciate that.
Okay, to pull this and put on a new business in?
We can either, Tom, if you want to leave it here, we can pull it for discussion. I, I think that's just fine. You agree?
We'll have the right people in the room.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just know, give them a highlight. We don't have to put on a new business, but we can just pull that off and, okay, appreciate that.
That is all we have for agenda. I do want, while we, before we move to legislative platform, I'd like Sheena to kind of discuss Monday, what that looks like at an interest bank arena for us.
Okay, so thank you, Tom. Every year we have our employee recognition ceremony and it will be on Monday beginning at 7:00 AM. So seven through nine, we will have breakfast for employees. And we have a good menu set up for everyone. And then at nine o'clock, we're going to start with our opening remarks and we do have a speaker that is coming in. So give us a little bit of inspiration and motivation for our employees. We'll follow that up by our employee value awards. And we'll tell you, we have over 300 awards that we're going to be giving this year, which is fantastic. Following that up by our employee service awards. So those five, 10, 15 year employees, we want to make sure and recognize them. So Commissioners will ask that you attend. We'll have you down on the floor shaking all those employees' hands.
And, and that starts at, that piece of it starts at?
9:00 AM and breakfast starts at 7:00.
Do we have any 50 year folks this year?
We do not, but we have 45.
Really?
Two, yes.
Is the motivational speaker our chairman?
Says, yeah.
It's a pretty close one, I mean.
He's got better hair than I do. That's good. Okay, Sheena, that's going to be great. We, I, this is one of my favorite events of the year. So.
Damon Young is actually going to speak and he's, you know, we all know Damon.
Remarkable, remarkable.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm going to defer to, I don't know, Commissioner Lu, if you want to speak or if you want to go into legislative, what's your draw, sir?
Um, I, I just wanted to share with everybody that I was asked by Senator Karen Tyson over the taxation division in Topeka to testify Monday on some of the inconsistencies that I have witnessed with valuations and, and some of my personal processes as well as, as what I've, what I've heard from constituents. I also understand that Phil Neers, the owner of the jumpstart stations, is going to testify as well because he owns gas stations in several different counties. And he wants to talk about how all the different counties value his property differently. So I've shared that with everybody and I am speaking on my own behalf. I'm not trying to represent this commission. So, but if anybody has any questions, additions or anything you would like me to add, or you feel that it's inappropriate for me to present, please let me know.
Just that, you know, we visited briefly right before the meeting and I just read that your letter and, and I'm comfortable with the letter that, and, and I'm kind of more, probably more comfortable because you've got this experience in your cases. I'm probably more comfortable you testifying as a, as an individual, but I am supportive.
Absolutely.
I like the letter. I think it's really factual and, and pretty good. I, I don't know if you guys have seen it yet. So if they're, I don't know, I don't have any objections.
I don't either. I just want to say thank you for doing it. Cause I know you're representing yourself personally, but there's so many other people that don't know the process or aren't maybe able to go through as far as you're going. So you're fighting for a lot of people. So thanks for doing it on your personal behalf, but thank you.
Yeah, very good. Good luck.
So you'll miss out on your first year pin that, that Sheena will be giving.
I'll be there, but I, I think I testified 11:15. So my intention is to go to the customer arena, come back to my office and do the Zoom from my office. So, yeah, I'm going to.
Hey, Tanya, take it away.
Good morning Commissioners. Before we jump in, just a couple of things I want to make of note. I have been communicating with just Jason and Jessica on the legislative platform. Jessica gave me a couple of just verbiage changes and then Jason wanted to point out a couple of things. He said, this is going to be a short session. And he said, Speaker Hawkins wants to be done in March. He said he doesn't know if that's going to be possible, but nonetheless, he said, as much as we can shorten the agenda and stick to and focus on the most important things, the better. So I'll just state that.
Sounds familiar.
As we go through this, I don't know if you want to, the easiest thing to do is just for me to point out kind of the changes I've made since the last time. Okay. So first thing I'll bring to your attention then is under legislative priorities, under treasurer, I want to point out that I've made several changes. A lot of this is related to, to what Commissioner Howell brought up the last time and then our meeting Chairman Beatty and Commissioner Meisner sat in as well as some of the leadership staff sat in with K-Door. So first item, that remains the same. Second item is lift the geographic boundaries, provide the ability to complete tag work at any tag office in the state. Third item, privatize administrative portion for the registration slash renewals. Next item, enhance and advance K-Door technology. Next item, expand online capacity and stagger personalized plates. And then the last item is support a raise of fees or transaction fee for fee funded office slash.
I, I would just say, and I guess for discussion, I, I've been given some purview of a piece of legislature that piece of legislation that is being developed right now, that'll be pushed by some leadership in the Senate. And it does not include a couple of things that are on here. So I think we need to have a discussion as to do, we want to deceive that legislation and then amend R. There are some things that are on here that is not going to be, that, that I've been told the legislature is not going to push certain aspects of this, but there are some things that we want that they are going to push. So I would just say, I, I think this is a good start for us, but I think once we get a sneak peek of what that's going to look like, then we might want to have a deeper conversation to amend, to try to come into alignment. I don't want to push things that we are being told are not going to come across the line by the Senate majority leader.
Okay, so are you saying keep it for now?
I would say keep it for now. So we get a better idea. We're actually going to get a sneak peek of what that looks like. And then we can kind of make our adjustments then to come into alignment if we want to.
Okay, I'll keep moving unless there's any other questions on that. So the next one is finance. And again, this is under legislative priorities. So what we did here was just make some verbiage changes. So let me just read this out. Continue support and review of HB 2377. A change to the current distribution formula for the county's 1% sales tax. KSA 12192 creates a disincentive to reducing property taxes by further reducing the relative portion that the municipality receives of the sales tax funds generated by accounting white sales tax. A change could be to include the assessed value as the calculation rather than property tax levy.
Just a second. And let's talk about maybe an update. Lindsay, do you want to go or you want me to go on Dr. Guo and what's happening with Johnson County and?
I'm happy to share what I know and then you can add on. So we have engaged Dr. Guo, our friend from WSU, Hugh the Wall School. And he is going to look at potential alternatives to even anything tied to property tax on that second half of that distribution formula. So well, no, so the second half of that formula is based on property taxes levied. And we're suggesting assessed value. So both of those are essentially tied to land value. And what he is potentially suggesting is that from a sales tax perspective, really maybe that's not the material way or the most best way to look at it. So he's going to look at it from that perspective. In addition, Tanya made a connection for me with the Johnson County finance folks. And so we had an opportunity to talk earlier this week. They have a couple of options too that they would like to float. And so Dr. Guo actually happens to be up there today for the LKN conference in Olathe. And so he's going to head over to the Johnson County admin building this afternoon and actually meet with them, look at their data and, and start collecting. So he's going to analyze information based on both Johnson and Cedric Counties. They also have 20 cities. We have 20 cities, just like us. There's a mixture of cities that have their own sales taxes versus ones that are split here. So he has said, I think formally by the end of the year, he'll have something to us, but his goal is to get it to us by Thanksgiving. So that's where we are with that process. And if you have anything else you'd like to add.
The only thing I'd add to that is we vetted all this through Jason before we went down this path and he thought that was a good idea. I'm in contact with a number of managers around the county who also interested in this. And so we'll continue to dialogue with them as well. And then Jason thought that Representative Smith would be open to whatever suggestions that we came in with or that Dr. Guo could come up with. So that's kind of our working plan going forward, handling this particular issue.
Okay.
So should I make a suggestion that maybe we should drop that last sentence off of that? And just leave it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Right.
Oh, Tom. Representative Smith is in the loop that we're working this.
Yes.
He's going to states of communicating with him.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. On regional forensic science center, this is the verbiage that Jessica had any change. She said basically this bill is ready to go. We just. She said basically this bill is ready to go. We just need to get to work with Kansas Senate to pass this on the cremains bill. So the only change there, as you'll see, it's at the very first part of both of these bullets. It's to work with Kansas, uh, Senate to pass, uh, twenty twenty-five HB. Uh, twenty-three thirty-one, and then it goes on to explain what these changes are for the cremains bill. Okay, uh. Great. And then one, so it's the, uh, under elections office, second to last change. Uh, Commissioner Howell, first bullet, had me change the verbiage here, and that is just at the very front part. To say eliminate redacted election results data by modifying statute. And then as it goes on to explain. So it was just that very front part.
Yeah, yeah, a good change, yeah.
Make it more clarifying. That, those are the only changes that I've made from the last time we met. Um, Jason, I think he's gonna try to come. To our next meeting, we'll talk about it if it's that staff meeting and maybe try to build us a little bit more to see if we can kind of shorten this up in any way. Um, but if we can, I'd like to give this, you know, before you add a commission for adoption.
Okay, I guess that was my question is when do we typically finalize?
Well, typically it's, it's later, um, usually November-ish, December-ish, but you know, if we can get it to the hands of Jason. And get it to South Centralization and the legislature, sooner the better.
Um, second question is, are joint, the joint platforms, are those conversations happening right now?
Not yet. They typically can't, uh, happen a little bit later. So my assumption is that they'll probably start happening late October or early November-ish. But I'll check on that as well, Chairman.
Thank you.
I think our plan would be, I would like something fairly final for the commission by the twenty-second of October meeting, if possible. Um, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and approve our platform and then we'll do the joint platform in addition to that.
Now, I think we have pretty clear understanding what it is we're gonna try to accomplish. So there's no reason why, I mean, I have an idea. Hey, anything else on legislative?
Not unless there's anything you want, you know, to cut or change or anything. I'll just kind of keep moving this along.
Yeah, let's keep moving it along. I think that's fair.
I'll ask Jason, um, if he can be available for us as happening, then we can just maybe have.
Very good. That'd be great. That'd be helpful. Tom, anything else on agenda?
I did, just, uh, I mean, this is still a pretty lengthy document as we try to condense it. Is there any value, or I know in previous years what we tried to do, but I'm just thinking. The treasurer support is huge, corrections formula and the sales tax formula. So we had a palm card, just had those three things. And I know the other stuff is of importance, but if it's a short. Uh, I'm not making policy right now, but I'm just saying that I'm aware that if it's a really shortened deal. I'd be curious for take Jason's guideline, guidance on.
I, I would agree. I, I, I think, I think what I've learned in this being the third time I've done this piece is that Jason has a really clear understanding. What our priorities are. And I think palm cards are helpful, but I think that if we leave it in the hands of our, I think handing our legislators the palm card, I think it ends up. Probably where a lot of palm cards end up on a table somewhere else. So I, I would just say that I, I trust. That our lobbyist who's already delivered significantly, if we get him our, and I think he knows our priorities. You agree, Pete? I think he. So I think we just gotta make it really clear. These are our priorities. And, and that cremains bill, I, you know, we, we've been told that thing's gonna come above the line right away too. So. There's some things I think he, he understands pretty clearly what we're looking for. That's great. Okay. Anything else on legislative? Anything else on agenda? Okay, uh, treasurer is here, Randy Bailey. She wants to give a quick update and I'd ask her to give a quick update. Obviously, I don't know if you've noticed, but the tag office is a bit in the news. So I think that, um, giving an update would be helpful. Hi.
Good morning. Yes, tag offices have been in the news, but maybe not enough. Um, so this morning, we did close down Kellogg Tag Office. And, um, I've been there since seven o'clock tearing down and movers are there. John Marshall's there. Um, IT's been there and it's, it's coming along. Um, but this morning, we did have a line around the building at Kellogg Tag Office. So, um, so you'll probably start getting calls if you haven't already received them about not being able to get in the Kellogg Tag Office today. Um, just in addition to the other emails, calls that you guys are getting. But, um, I will tell you that. So we have been using our roughen satellite location that is gonna be set and open officially on Tuesday, and I'll get to that in a minute. But, um, we've been testing that out, making sure everything is working and appropriately, but we've essentially been using that as an overflow location right now to help get people in. That, um, as we're trying to work through the, this situation. So, um. So those people that were out in line, I told them, come up to me, took the laptop out there and started just working them in, getting them, getting them in into roughen today. If I could, um, getting them into a location on Tuesday if I could, um. Some people were very upset, um, and didn't stick around to listen to everything, but everybody that did stick around did get helped. And the latest somebody is in is at two o'clock on Tuesday. So all those other people that were in line today are taken care of. Most of them are being seen today in the roughen location. Um, so just heads up, if, if they do call and they're upset, I did tell, if you stick around, I'll get you taken care of, but many of them chose to leave. And, but those that did stick around did get taken care of. Um, second, so we are opening the Hayesville location on Tuesday. That's, has all tested out and it's good to go. And then we are opening the roughen location officially for customers on Tuesday as well. So later on this afternoon, the calendars will be out there so people can start going and making an appointment. Um, through the weekend for, to be seen in roughen on Tuesday morning and roughen on Tuesday morning. Um, our Kellogg location, so, um, I've had a conversation with Chairman and, um. He had, he had kind of a good idea and then talked to Nicole about it a little bit and she had a little bit better idea. Um, so, sorry. But, um, anyway, so what we're going to do with the Kellogg office is we know that we have to be over there still, some of our administrative staff to, um, let vendors in. And then we still gotta clean out and there's still some things going on. So it's like, we're still there till December thirty-first. We still technically have that building till December thirty-first. We're gonna keep two stations up and use that right now as a little overflow office. And, um, so as, so everybody who we have put overflow into roughen, we, we are calling them now to that, to tell them to go to the Kellogg location. That way then the roughen calendar is opened up for people to start making appointments on Tuesday. Um, we're not gonna put the Cal, Kellogg calendar out there for the public to sign up on because we know that with the landlord. That, that at any time he might rent that building or whatever. And in that contract, we said that we would vacate if that, if that did happen. So this allows us then to not have to readjust a whole bunch of people's booking if, if they got booked into that office. We could close that location down if we need to, because maybe he needs to do some due diligence on his end and we need to shut down. So it, it gives us the flexibility to. Use that office still a little bit while we're there, because we have to be there, but then allows the landlord the flexibility to, if we need to shut down quickly. For a couple hours during a day or something, we could do that as well. So.
Okay, helpful update. Appreciate that. Any questions?
So, so somebody's there, like, so today's Friday. I, I guess if we get calls and emails, which I assume we're gonna get some, what do we tell the citizen? Do we tell them, is there a number they're supposed to call to set up an appointment?
No.
What, what do?
So, um, like I said, later this afternoon, um, the appointments, those two calendars for the roughen and the Hayesville location are gonna go out online. So if they check out online here this afternoon, they should see a spot where they can book an appointment for Tuesday, starting Tuesday. So each of those locations will start with brand new appointments.
Is that on sedgecity.org or in the treasurer?
Yeah, yeah, where they go now to book an appointment for say Derby or, or, um, Tyler or whatever. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, that'll go live here in, here in a little while.
Monday.
We're, we're closed for Monday on Columbus Day and that, that's where, so today Kellogg closed so we could tear down and get everything over to the Douglas location. So on Monday, everybody showing back up at the Douglas location to reset up the workstations, because the office will be completely closed down and we're not interfering. And affecting customers that are coming in.
Thank you, Brandy, for the update. I just wanted to ask about the communication plan specifically on the Hayesville Satellite Office. I'd noticed that we had put out something on social media earlier this week. It didn't include the Hayesville yet. I think just maybe because we weren't quite ready yet and it was shared out there on Hayesville Happenings and a bunch of other social media. So can we put something out there and, and, and kind of? Um, I, I appreciate that, just.
To clarify, so as we open new satellite offices, we do typically do a media release launch. And so we will have that information. Once roughen and Hayesville are open for Tuesday, we will have that information. We'll push on media release out so that, that can be covered by the news. But then also put that on our social media and any other satellites that are able to open, we will also do the same.
Okay, you let me know when that happens.
Yes, yes.
Um, one other thing I wanted to ask about, are we working with law enforcement at all? Because I've, I've noticed some media blurbs out there that. You know, there's kind of no tolerance for not having, having your tag up there. Are, are we speaking with law enforcement at all on this? Is there any leanancy or anything going on or?
Um. I guess the sheriff yesterday, he sent out a message, um, saying that they're gonna follow the rules. And their rule is, is they, they do pull over and, but I don't know that they're actively looking for that. But I mean, if they do come across it, they're gonna do what the law says that they have to do. Yeah.
Okay.
Brandy, uh, just a question that I get often is for the, for those that are needing title work done. Um, what's your current weight? And can you just kind of go over what, how they need to? Um, I know you're smiling. Yeah, it'll get better with these satellites, right? But what's the current weight? And then can you just walk through the best practices on getting that scheduled for, um, for the customer?
So really I want to tell people, don't wait till the last minute, because that's what we're finding in a lot of these people is, well, my stuff expires tomorrow. And, well, you know, I mean, but don't wait till the last minute. Please, please plan ahead. But I know planning ahead isn't always easy at the moment now because the calendar is completely booked. Um, the calendar, so the calendar that we're using in the queue list system, it only allows us to book out thirty days. Um, I'd said that the new calendar for, um, Hayesville and Roughen will be out there this afternoon. Well, we are in the, we have upgraded the queue list system. So that's how those calendars are getting out there right now. So. On two, when that calendar goes out for Russian and Hayesville, the calendar is now gonna open up forty-five days for the remaining locations. So there will be some more days at some of these other locations and then that, that upgrade, that's what this calendar does is it pushes out an upgrade. So, um, forty-five days. So go out, make an appointment. Come, I don't come get in line in the mornings. That really is, is just adding to the problem. Um, when we show up in the mornings right now, we have probably a hundred and fifty, two hundred people that are there in that line. Well, we can only, well, when it was two locations, each office could see about a hundred and seventy-five titles a day. And well, they're already there in line, starting, you know, as soon as we open the doors. So those people are coming in and essentially taking the spots. For everybody else that's still at home waiting to try to get in. So it's, it's kind of adding to the problem. Um. Just keep trying throughout the day. The queue, you know, people, people don't show up or they cancel appointments. Um, or we might get through people faster. So the, the, the calendar or the queue list line opens back up. So keep trying throughout the day. Um, that's really all the steps I can give you. Mail, mail it in. Mail in is a great option. Um, gets to us and we'll process it. Usually you get it back in two or three days. Um, depending on the mail, it, it could take a little longer, but we, we're turning those around within two days. Once we get them into the office. Um, there's a drop box out at Douglas location to drop off the work in the drop box, um, online renewals. Um, if you can do an online renewal, please do it. Um, you, sometimes people are not able to do that because their insurance hasn't uploaded or the insurance changed. And so it isn't incorrect. So that's why some people can't, uh, um, register online. And just, just keep trying through the day. Right now we're seeing wait times probably six, seven hours. And it's, and I will tell you that when you're coming in, in the morning. And, and we're putting you in the queue line, you're gonna see a wait time that probably says seven hundred, eight hundred hours or minutes, hours, my bad. You're gonna see seven hundred, eight hundred minutes wait time. Well, as we're trying to filter people in and get them in as quickly as possible and get them into that system. That system is trying to calculate in the backend to get you an accurate number. So you're gonna see a high wait time as soon as we get you in line. But as it calms down and we start working through customers and we start calling people and, and it's, it's settled down, those wait times are gonna go down. So just because you see something really high, uh, right as soon as you get in, please don't freak out about that. It, it will adjust itself and you, those white times should come down. Um, I will tell you this morning, um, I did have a few volunteers that come in to, um, if we wanted to open early. So we did open at seven o'clock this morning. Um, and people were so excited when we went outside and said, we're gonna work you in. And between seven and eight o'clock, we helped seventy-five people. Yeah.
Well, I want to compliment you and your staff. It's been extremely frustrating for everybody that's had any interaction except for. Um, the staff has been really, really, um, kind and calm. And, um, I know just personal friends that have, um, gone through the process. And they're like, you guys are running a machine out there and just getting people through and super helpful and positive attitude. So. Uh, you know, please pass that along and know that we're doing a great job. And I'm hearing a lot of compliments, though there's still frustration. At least they're having a good experience.
Yeah, and I will, I will give kudos to our staff, to my staff. They're, they're, they've been put through a lot. They've been called a lot. They've had a lot said to them. But they just, you know, truck on, truck along and they're, they're doing a great job. They really are.
Hey, Brandy, question. You mentioned the drop off piece, the, the drop off box. Could you, so the title work that people are standing in line for, they can drop that off?
No, not title work. That's just renewals. So.
Just renew.
Um, that is something that I am looking into as long, along with the dealership, um, piece of it is, could we have a, a station there in Kel, in Douglas? Where you could drop off your title work. We go through it. Everything looks good. We'll give you a call when it's ready to come back and pick up. So we are looking into that.
Is that something that we should maybe escalate the investigation? That, that sounds like a really viable option.
Right. And that is actually part of the piece that IT is helping us work on too, with creating that, um, where they can upload their documents. So that way it flows to the back office and we can work through the title work. So when, our hope is that once we get that piece up and rolling. Um, this kind of all just plays in together and we can drop off title work if you don't want to upload those documents.
Okay. A couple of quick things, real quick. Um, number one is, I, whatever we're able to explain to people, what's really happening in the cause of this. Surge traffic right now, people become a lot more understanding. Um, obviously, there's, there's the issues that we're wanting and we've been talking about the fees for quite a while. But the fees aren't necessarily causing the surge traffic.
Correct.
The two things that are causing the big issues right now, number one is the hundred and five counties on one server and the consistent and constant disruptions we get. But it's the personalized plates.
Yeah.
We're up four hundred percent, I heard you say.
Hundred percent, yes.
Four hundred percent. Um, could you let us know of the, how many people, how many transactions are you doing a day at your tag offices?
We're doing roughly thirty-one hundred.
Would you be able to shoot us a message and let us know how many of those are personalized plates so that we can actually have an understanding?
And you actually asked me that yesterday and I didn't get back to my office and I thought about that this morning. So I apologize.
No, it'd be helpful to just give constituents an idea of what's happening. Do you, here, I think here's the key question. Does this help us with strategy? One, one of twenty-six, when we're out of the five-year cycle, because we're gonna be addressing this with the legislature and asking them to make adjustments here. Do we get back to a normal flow of traffic toward, there's not gonna be lines around the building?
I don't think we get back to our normal flow till probably February, because in January, we're still gonna have people from December that are trying to still get in. And, and get taken care of. Our people who have procrastinated and, and, and saving money for Christmas time. And then we'll just come take care of tags in January.
Book of twenty twenty-six is not gonna be like this. What's causing this disruption is the surge traffic due to personalized, is that, is that an accurate statement?
That is accurate. I think we really start to see more of our normal in March when we start hitting the letter B for renewals. Um, February will be pretty quiet because we don't have January, February renewals.
Okay.
Um, that's usually commercial, so we'll start seeing the, the true in March. But my anticipation is that that's gonna go back down. And we're gonna start seeing normalcy and, um, things will get back to being better.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Keep us posted. Let us know how we can help.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, covered a lot today. Anything else? It's Friday. Enjoy the day. See you next week.